Last regular meeting for the month of January. And we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance and then we will have the community invocation. Please stand and join with me in honoring our nation's symbol. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we just come before you tonight, Lord, just with full thanks for this great nation that we live in, Lord, and, Lord, we just thank you that we have the opportunity to still meet in public and meet with each other in person, and, Lord, we do thank you for that privilege. Lord, we do ask, as these city leaders are gathered here tonight, Lord, that you would just give them discernment to make wise decisions for this wonderful city that we live in, Lord. And again, Lord, just ask for protection over this city, Lord. There's a ton of sickness, just the cold and the flu and everything else, Lord, and so we just ask that you would just protect us, Lord, and heal the sick, Lord. We love you and we praise you. Amen.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. This is not so much a good faith amendment as it is an adjustment. If you'll take a look at Business 8A, if that looks like something we might have done before, you're right. So take off A. You don't have to make everything like A, B, C, D, E, F, G. You can just leave it the way it is. But A, we took care of previously. Any other good faith amendments to the agenda? Hearing none. Any declarations of conflict of interest? We do have Raven Rain Gadiant on the bartender permit. Going on to any declarations of discussions outside the open meeting on something that will be voted upon that with each other or with outsiders that would affect the vote potentially? Hearing none. Any elected officials have any announcements for the good of the order? Hearing none. Going on to the consent agenda, we had the approval of the minutes, the accounts payable. President Nebiker came in again, brought us a checkbook, and appreciate that.
Nora's gonna be happy.
What's that?
Nora's gotta be happy.
Oh, yeah. And then the permit, bartender permit for Raven Rain Gadiant. So the chair will entertain a motion at this time to approve the consent agenda.
Mayor?
Yes, Counselor, who is that?
Henderson.
Oh, Henderson, yes.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
All right.
I'll second it.
Main motion has been made by Counselor Henderson to approve the agenda. The consent agenda is presented, and I believe that was Counselor Ruzinkin. Second it. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Opposed, nay. Any abstentions? Hearing none. And hearing none. Chair rules motion passes unanimously. The next item is B. Chief Kunkka, that has to do with the donation from the Masonic Lodge, number 37, First Responder fundraiser to be used for the annual Cops and Shoppers event.
Yes, and Counsel, Mayor, this was the event in the past that we created its own line, and it was for the Christmas party. And because of the times that we've been through recently, we have chose not to hold those Christmas parties at the public schools and other reasons, too. It kind of, we started inviting too many kids. It wasn't a personal event, quite like what ended up being Cops and Shoppers. It was a great event at By Mart this year. We joined together with the Sheriff's Department and did it and plan on doing it again next year. Kiwanis, or I'm sorry, the Mason's Lodge donated $500 to that event, and the, I'm sorry, yes, that's correct. And the responders' first fundraiser that Barb Hugan put on at her facility also raised another $600 for that event. So I'm asking to accept that money to be able to go towards that event that we had.
Mayor?
Yes.
So Chief, is that a special account that it goes into, that it hages for that?
Yes, it's police fundraiser is the actual line in the budget. It's created for that, yes.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion that we allow the Police Department to accept the donations from Mason Lodge, number 37, and First Responders fundraiser and put that into the account for that annual Cops and Shoppers event.
All right. Second it. All right. Main motion. It actually was, I'm sorry, Counselor Henderson, the Right Honorable Counselor Ruzinkin actually seconded it before you. But we, I tell you what, we're gonna wait for a while. We'll have that three-second pause to give you an opportunity next time, okay?
Okay.
Anyway, the main motion was made by President Nebiker to accept the donations from the Masonic Lodge, number 37, and then the donation from the First Responder fundraiser, the Hugan fundraiser, to be used for the annual Cops and Shoppers event. $500 and $600 respectively, total $1,100. Second was made by Counselor Ruzinkin. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay? Hearing none. Any abstentions? There were none. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next item is to approve the December 2021 quarterly financial statement. Madam Clerk.
Okay, this is our first quarter for this fiscal year. Going through the, that's, going through the report, if you noticed that some of the categories are a little bit accelerated, like general fund is at 27% of expenses. Just remember, at the first of our budget year, we pay a lot of dues, like our Black Mountain software, all those big items we pay out at the very beginning. So if it looks a little skewed this first time around, that is usually the reason why. Is there any questions concerning the financial, and I'm just looking for approval and to publish?
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I make a motion, we approve the December 2021 quarterly financial statements and have it published by?
On our website.
On our website.
We don't have to put it in the paper any longer, so.
Second.
All right, the main motion has been made by President Nebiker to approve the December 21 quarterly financial statement, which of course is the first quarter for us. And the second was made, and to have it published by putting it on our website. And the second was made by Counselor Henderson. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay? Any abstentions? Hearing none and hearing none. Chair rules motion passes unanimously. Next item is the speed limit on South Johns. Mr. Siemens.
Good evening, Mayor, Counsel. So as all of you know, we have finally completed our South Johns reconstruct and got our roundabouts, and throughout this process, we've fully been open over 30 days, and in that 30 days, we have had several complaints about people speeding in that zone. It was clearly a concern in the development side that I worked with Keller &amp; Associates. I told them that most of our city streets are 20 miles per hour, but being that this was 25, we didn't really want to go through that process to change it. But now that we are in full swing out there, it's clear that it probably does need to be changed. 25 is 30 to 35 for most people out there, and I don't think that most people are intentionally doing this. I just don't think that they, there's, it's not a narrowed road anymore. It's very well lit. You know, it's got the center turn lane, so we're just not adhering to what's really going on as the drivers. I know that Chief Kunkka has helped me out there and kind of done some reconnaissance and made some traffic stops and stuff. I don't think we have excessive speeders, but we definitely have a problem because most people are doing that five-plus over, which puts those miles per hours out there at 30. So ultimately, I'm requesting Counsel to consider taking that speed limit from 25 to 20, which is our typical speed limit in residential areas. We also have the Senior Citizen Center there and just a couple businesses that ultimately are residents other than the salon. I think it's appropriate, but it is up to you. Any questions for me?
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I've got a few questions for you. Number one, my biggest thing is that Johns used to be the Baja 500, and it was really narrow, and it was still 25 back then. Now it's wider, we have bike lanes, we have suicide lane, we have sidewalks. I think it's safe at 25, and I'd like to know what, you know, what you guys think on, what your basis for making it down to 20? I mean, has there been any traffic research? My, I've got a lot of issues. One, that the people are speeding. That's a law enforcement issue, not traffic speed limit issue.
Sure.
And I think that's, we should be addressing it that way rather than slowing it down to 20.
So as far as enforcement, I would let Chief Kunkka speak to that, but give me just one second. But as far as basis goes, I'm the Public Works Director, so my basis is solely set on, we do have bike lanes, but I'll tell you what, when you have someone going down the road at 30, 35, and someone's on a bicycle, when you clip that person, because it will happen, now we do have a significant issue. So I look at it as our residential is all 20 miles per hour. I think there's a reason for that. One of the few cities I'm aware of that has a residential as low as we do. I don't know where that come from, but it was genius, because most residentials in some of our heavier traffic areas over in the Meridian and the Boise, they should be 20 miles per hour, because people are typically doing 35 in the 25s or the, or 40 in the 30s. We're not trying to reinvent a wheel. You made the point, it used to be the drag strip or the, you know?
Baja 500.
Baja 500. I wasn't around in that time. Clearly, you were. You were around a lot of things that I wasn't.
Horse and buggy.
But, yeah. But what I do know is, as a servant of the city and the patrons, you may have gotten some calls or people that don't like the idea, but I get calls from people who directly lived down there, because I was part of the rebuild. And one of the things that resonate with me is people say, I love our new Johns Avenue, but now people are going way too fast. So the safety corridor that you created, that I promoted and pride the city on, I don't know that it fully exists there. So I still stand on, I'm not concerned about what other people think or whatever, I'm concerned about the safety. And that is why I'm proposing.
And I appreciate that, but I've, I've still got, you know, it's much wider now. We've got, you know, it seems to be safer now than it's ever been.
Sure.
And there hasn't been any, that I know of, incidences where there's been kids hit in bicycles or anybody back when it was narrow.
Well, you're misspoken on that, because there was two children hit right at that corridor that actually gave us a $500,000 tap grant. So there has been things that have happened in that corridor, and I think our goal was is to create a safe access for people. And so to change the speed limit from 25 to 20, you're talking, you're talking seconds in a travel time, but you're talking the difference between striking somebody at 20 and 25. And I'll let the chief bark it out a little bit, but I mean, I can get you those statistics of what happens in that five miles per hour. To slow people down, I think it's great.
Increases survivability by 35%. Counselor Henderson.
I was just going to say, I, when we, when we did this, I was concerned about it not being uniform with everything else, pretty much. And so I kind of think in uniformity that it should be at 20. There again, there's another issue that I've wondered about, and that is 12th Street, the twin Johns in Washington, that it is 35. And that is far too fast for that narrow of a road. And I've wondered about that in the past. I haven't brought it up, but now that we're discussing it, I think that needs to be looked at also, because there are no sidewalks there except in a couple little small spots, and there's really no shoulders, drain ditch on one side. So I'm, I'm in favor of changing it, just so that the fact that you go from 35 to 20, and it's 20 through the rest of town, it's kind of silly to have it go from 35 to 25 to 20 in that short period of time. Just my thought.
Yeah, and Councilman Henderson, we have been discussing the 35 miles per hour. The density for residential out there is very low, and so I don't know that we have really been able to put a thumb on whether 35 or 25 would be necessary there, but we clearly see it and we're hearing it from the local residents. And so our focus right now is just that new corridor, because we clearly see there's a problem.
Yeah, I understand that, thank you, and I appreciate that. I was just meaning, as far as the 35, if you're walking, if you go out there and walk on that, that road on 12th Street, I would just like to have somebody look at that, because it seems like it's, it's quite excessive for that, for that area with outside walks being there.
So Counselor Henderson, you're talking about on the, on the west side from, between Washington and Johns?
Correct.
Yes, okay. And you're right. I walk it every October, and you're correct.
Mayor, I've got one more. Substation, I mean, excuse me, not substation, but Mill Road is also 35, and there's no sidewalks there. And the incident you were talking about with the kids got hit, that was at Cross Street at 4th, and they were crossing the street, they weren't going down Johns.
Correct. I was making a point. You said there's no accidents, I was making a point. This is what really has stemmed us to look at some of the traffic speeds that we have and create that safer corridor, and that, you know, Councilman Ruzinkin, that's what we're here to do is.
And I agree on 100%.
You know, I mean, I don't get caught up with people liking it from 25 to 20. The majority of our streets are already 20. This isn't us changing a direction based on one roadway. It really becomes uniform to most of our roadways and residential.
Thank you.
So we have done a number of studies on Johns. The first one that we did, that I reported to Clint about, was when we wanted to put those flashers up. That was the first time that I gathered all that information from ITD and counted the amount of crashes there. I could give you names of the people on the bikes. There's at least two that I can think of right now that were hit by cars. One was, I think, at Fifth and Johns, and I think there was two there at Fifth and Johns on the west side. And then once we started really working on the roundabouts to get that grant, the tap grant that he's talking about, again, I submitted another letter that pointed out the statistics of the crashes that had occurred on that road. So there has been things done in the past that have been reported to us. And then just recently, I did a traffic study with my officers. I brought guys in on overtime for three days in a row, and the majority of the vehicles were going 30 to 31 miles an hour over, five to six over. And like Clint said, when it's 25, we're looking at 30 and 31, instead of when it's 20, and we're looking at 25 and 26. And Mr. Ruzinkin, I just took another complaint again today of the subdivisions and how people fly through the subdivisions. Well, one thing that our subdivisions have in common with Johns is they're super wide. There's barely any trees in there, and it's super visible, and people fly through there because they think it's really safe. And we do need more officers to help enforce speed limits. It's true, but.
Got one question for them.
Yes.
Now, the two bikes that were hit, incident with, on Fifth Street, was that before the project was done?
Oh, yes. Yes, yes, this was years ago.
So it hasn't been happening since it's been widened?
Oh, correct. There hasn't, correct. No one's been hit since, since the roundabouts. That's correct.
Mayor? Go ahead first.
So I guess my thing is, maybe for Jake, I look to the city ordinance about speed like that. Does this have to be changed by resolution, or is it, can we just do it as a council by a voice vote or something?
Yeah, I was curious, too, when I saw this in the agenda, and I, there's nothing in our code that says that we'd have to change. And to my knowledge, this may be the second time we've changed a speed limit since I've been city attorney, and my recollection is the last time we did it was by just a voice vote like this.
You just talked about that, about 61-2, a general that talks about 20 miles an hour everywhere in the city limits, unless posted otherwise, as also as by council resolution. And I didn't know if that, if that's just terminology or if that's actually a resolution.
Well, so.
Just a minute.
If what you're saying is it's, the speed limit is supposed to be 20 unless the council makes a resolution to the contrary, then in this case, a resolution wouldn't be necessary.
It would be more uniform.
Yeah, it would be uniform, so, yeah.
I think I read some also in the, in the policy, our ordinance is that uniformity is key to people. They come into town, they're not really getting a lot. I've mixed thoughts on it. That is a really wide, open street, best street we've got in town right now. It does seem like it'd be a lot safer, but I also believe 25, people's gonna drive at least that five to seven over, because that's usually what's acceptable. So it is putting the speeds in the 30s, so, yeah, this is a, this is a good one to think about.
And I do think that it's gonna draw more people. I mean, Johns is not gonna just draw more traffic, it's gonna draw more bicycles, it's gonna draw more foot traffic, and so you're gonna have the increase of the dangers coming there, yeah.
Counselor Henderson.
I just wanted to reference, you know, for the time that I've been on City Council, the only time we changed the speed limit was out on the highway from 55 to 40, and I don't, I don't remember if it was on a resolution or not, but somebody, if you really needed to look it up, that's the only one I can remember in 16 years, so.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve reducing the speed from 25 miles per hour to 20 miles per hour on South Johns Avenue in the, from the area that starts from the existing 20 mile per hour zone on 4th Street up to the current 35 mile per hour zone just south of 12th Street.
All right. I'm sorry, Counselor Henderson, but Counselor Harris jumped in.
Okay.
But we got you down for the third. Counselor Butler made the main motion to approve reducing the speed from 25 to 20 miles per hour on South Johns in that area that starts from the existing 20 miles per hour zone on 4th Street up to the current 35 mile per hour zone south of 12th Street. And the, the second was by Counselor Harris. Is there any further discussion?
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
So education is key to all this stuff.
For sure.
What will we be doing? I noticed on the Mill Road, they actually have some of those little signs that have a speed limit and then below it. Is there any chance, I don't know how speeds is already?
We will have to put something out for at least 30 days to protect the PD, because if we make a change without some type of notification, it will be challenged. And so the, I think, just not knowing what the decision would be made from council, you know, we didn't dive into that, but ultimately, we'd put notification signs up for 30 days to say, hey, speed's going to be reduced in this zone, you know, and give a date and make sure that it's, it's clear to anyone who would be going through there, so that it doesn't get challenged, because all of a sudden, one day, we go out and change the speed limit and nobody knew. And then there'll also be, once that, that gets through that 30 days, all the 20 mile per hour signs before you enter into that zone, since it's changed, coming from the Highway 16, will have a speed, you know, reduced ahead sign. So we don't have to do that on 4th Street simply because, or at Johns and 4th, because it's already a 20, and we'll just carry through out there.
I guess my concern would be, with this being so big and open and clear and very nice roadway, the cost of those speed limit radar things, I think it'd be a very good reminder for all of us, because it's, it is easy to get a little sexy speed down that area.
We do have the radar trailer that's coming back. We just recently have got it back up and running. Rich Stroud, the mechanic, and I, and Sergeant Huff need to get together and get that calibrated and all ready to go, so that will be ready. We've also located another one that has decent value, so we have been looking for those. And I know there's grants out there, along with the ITD, that we do for overtime grants. We actually can use that funding. Instead of overtime, we can use it for equipment, and these speed signs can be gotten through that, so that's something we're working on.
Are those quite expensive, Chief?
I haven't priced them yet. I haven't priced them yet. I know the one that we bought at the high school was super expensive. I think it was close to $10,000. I think it was about.
It was like five.
Was it five? Oh, look at me, I exaggerated. There it was. It was five.
But there are some, there are some cheaper, there are some cheaper options to that, and we do have, we came in way under budget on the Johns project, so there will be some funds still available there, and we will be bringing rapid flashers to the council, and I think that I'll get some quotes for some of those notification speed limit signs. And I agree, maybe that'd be a good way to, you know, help mitigate some of the speeds, but also clearly put it out to people, you know? So maybe sticking three or four of those in that zone, because they just go right underneath the speed limit sign, and I think some of them are pretty inexpensive comparative to some of the other ones.
Mayor?
Wait, wait. Counselor Ruzinkin.
What if we put those up now and left the speed limit at 25 versus waiting until it was 20? If, if people saw the signs, said, hey, look, I am speeding, and I think that'd be a better way of going at the.
Well, there's a motion to change, so.
I actually, I mean, I live traffic, you know, I'm not a police officer, but I see how it works. I really think by changing the speed limit and then putting some better notification out there will mitigate that problem. So I think ultimately, if we drop it to 20, the appropriate thing to do is give the notifications and then get certain signage out there that reminds people, as a flashing speed limit sign notifying you of your actual speed will also help and maybe take a little pressure off the PD also. So I think that would probably be the most appropriate way to handle a new speed zone in the process.
And I, I know this is a long time ago when we got that one at the high school, but when I initially pulled stats, because it's got a computer attached to it, and you can pull stats from that one whenever you want to, I could go way back, three years ago, and pull the stats off that machine. When I initially went off the stats to find out speeding, I went one mile an hour over and above, and it was like 33% of the vehicles went one mile an hour over or above, and that was beyond infinity, right? It wasn't like any stopped up a top. When I changed that to I was only monitoring five or above, only 3% of the vehicles that went by that sign in a month went five miles an hour over or above. So again, another example of how a lot of people do that five over, 1, 2, 3, 5 over, but above that is where you're concerned and worried about.
Counselor Henderson.
Chief Kunka, I, I was wanting to know, I guess you're the best to ask, would you be waiting for the month trial period, so to speak, before you ticketed people?
Oh, before we ticketed people, correct. Yes, correct. I would say that that's true. But we need to be enforcing that speed during that month, so we need to be out there and giving warnings and making stops. I'll probably bring back extra patrol again for that area once that speed limit does change. Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
I want to say that I applaud this, that we have worked hard to make it walkable, but you can make it walkable, and if you don't make it safe, kids are still crossing, and people are struggling with the roundabouts. They're not paying attention to who's out there, they're just trying to figure out how to drive around it. So making the difference and making sure that our seniors, who now can walk to the senior center and all around, I think this is absolutely a great thing, so thank you.
Thank you. And when it warms up, we're going to see a lot more foot traffic and bicycle traffic out there, and so I think this is the And so I think this is the time. So thank you for making that, making it happen, counsel.
All right. Any other discussion, questions? Calling for the question then. All those in favor of the motion to reduce the speed from twenty-five to twenty on South Johns with the area starting from the existing twenty zone on Fourth Street up to the current thirty-five mile per hour zone south of Twelfth Street, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay?
Nay.
One nay, five ayes, motion carries. Next matter is approval of the surplus of equipment.
So Mayor, counsel, every five, ten, maybe fifteen years, we, we go through our laundry list of things that we, we have in our city that we either don't use or we don't feel that has, has been used in, in a certain duration that it's collecting dust and really costs us money to keep updated. So what we have is a list of these items that we would like to surplus and if approved, it would go to a public auction to follow the public auction code for ourselves. Does anybody have any questions on the items?
Mayor? Yeah, Clint, are they, is the county getting with you on any of this, this truck? Because we need one bad out there at the fairgrounds.
You do? So I haven't talked to the county about it. The last time we did anything with the county, you know, we, we ended up doing a local auction and I just don't think we've reached out as, to as many people as I, I'd like to, so I haven't talked to the county at all about it.
Because we are in a search for a truck out there, so.
Okay, so.
Bill would know more about that. He would teach you, so.
For sure.
All right.
But yeah, I mean, the problem is the, the two vehicles we have, they're in pretty bad shape. So I mean, you know, usually if we have something that has got a lot more life to it, you know, we'll...
Have you ever seen the trucks out there? They're probably similar.
We'll usually, you know, reach out to some of our locals. We do a lot of stuff with the county and so of course, you know, I mean, we, we like to, but these, both these vehicles are, they're pretty rough.
All right, okay, thanks.
Yeah, but thank you.
So you expect that all these items go to a public auction then?
Yeah, so the two auctions, if approved, the two auctions I would look into would be either like music or, or Pickett, you know, so that, I mean, that's a public auction. You know, they, they do a lot of municipality stuff, so.
All right. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Siemens?
Mayor? Yes, sir.
I just, Pete Bilstein, I thought we rented a propane tank, I believe, but we're, see, we're getting rid of a propane tank in here. Is this outdated?
It's very outdated. It was, it was, it was the old weed burning...
Okay.
Propane trailer and it's very unsafe. It has no safety mechanism. So I pulled it out of service about five years ago when I seen what we were doing and the guys didn't know, but clearly it was not safe. And so, you know, if that thing was to ever backdraft, it would be, I would have Chief Christensen out there helping us deal with that problem.
What about the twenty-three, twenty-foot sticks?
Yep, so those, that's a perforated pipe and that was purchased back in the oh-four, oh-five era when we were doing, I, I don't know, there were some projects that the engineers at the time had us pre-purchase all of the stuff for. Well, it's been there forever because it's perforated, so it's not necessarily a usable pipe. We put it in in a few spots. We tiled a ditch right behind the water treatment plant and we wrapped it with fabric because there was no traffic to it. But it's just not, it's, it's just not a solid pipe. And so for somebody, it'll probably, with the cost of pipe right now, I mean, somebody will probably pay a pretty penny for it. But, you know, it's that UV rays and stuff, we've covered it in the past and the tarps get torn off. And so it's hard to give away with what we're faced with on pipe product and, and purchasing, you know, right now, but we just don't see it, it'd be more valuable to put the money back in the account and try to get something else.
Was that part of the sewer system or not?
It was. It was the, it was the underdrain.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
The magical underdrain and I, I don't know what the plan was, but they, the engineers just thought there was gonna be a shortage on pipe and manholes. So I don't know if you remember how, I know you remember what locusts used to look like. We had all that pipe out there and all those manholes. We moved the manhole sense out to the waste bar plant. But, you know, we, almost a couple hundred thousand dollars in product that never went in the ground. So I don't know, but not proud of that by any stretch of imagination, but I don't want to just let this, that we could auction sit and, and do nothing. But yeah, the underdrain, I mean, the IT director and myself finally put it to work, but, yeah. But still a very expensive conduit.
All right. Chair will entertain a motion.
Mayor? Yes, sir.
All right, to make a motion that we approve the surplus of public work equipment.
All right.
Second.
Second.
What's that?
I said I gave her enough time.
Yeah, okay. We're, we're gonna have Counselor Butler as the second on that. And Counselor Rezinkin is the main motion to approve the surplus of the public works equipment. Of course, that is the equipment that's set forth on the list dated one twenty, twenty, twenty-two. Is that correct, Counsel Rezinkin?
Yes.
And Counselor Butler?
Yes.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay? Any abstentions? Hearing none and none. Motion passes unanimously. The next matter has to do with one of the best partners we have ever had in the history of our partnerships and that's the Blue Cross of Idaho Foundation for Health. Starting probably about, and, and I think Courtney was on, Courtney Frost. Are you on Courtney somewhere?
I am, hello.
Great. About, was it seven years ago that we got together with that goofy mayor's challenge thing?
It was, yeah. We, we started working together, yeah, about seven years ago.
But thanks to the, the great work that Courtney and her foundation does, we have been the beneficiary of, of a lot of money. And from, from the mayor's walk and then they, I think it was around thirty thousand dollars for the walkway on Twelfth, at least that, if not more. And now, there's an astronomical amount. Courtney probably called, called me, oh, it's been a couple months and she said, hey, the suggestion has been made that we assist you. Just wanted you to know, because I'm not sure you were in the loop, but that, that we assist the city of Emmett with their comprehensive plan that's, that based upon the, the second pillar of, of the strategic vision on developing a, a health-conscious city. And I said, well, that sounds pretty good to me. And I guess she was already, was she already talking to you, Brian? Okay, so you guys, you were already talking about it. And in any event, we then had a proposed agreement and so I'm gonna let Brian take it from there.
So to start out with, you all know that we're working on our very own comprehensive plan. We're splitting from the county with the joint comprehensive plan and we're going our own route. Same as the county, they're going to their own plan and we're doing the same. So we heard about this grant and we have decided at that time during our, one of our bi-weekly staff meetings that we have with our firm that we are using, Logan Simpson, and we decided to go after this grant. So before we get into this, I want to recognize the two people that are part of our team that went after this grant and filled out the paperwork, got everything submitted for us. So they're the ones that really need the recognition for us obtaining this grant. That is Alicia and Dory, our office staff. We have them come. So they're very instrumental in doing all of this. Clint, myself, Mike, we're all part of the team, so we have five of us working on this plan and we're very successful and just very, very fluent team to work together with. So. We'll start into it. I'm just gonna give you a little grant background real quick. This came from Courtney, so I'll read through this real quick and then we'll go to the acceptance of the grant. And we'll do a little PowerPoint also. So through the partnership, Blue Cross of Idaho Foundation for Health has with communities in Idaho, we began to realize the impact that incorporating health in comprehensive plans could have in communities. In late twenty nineteen, we decided to award a grant to the city of Driggs to pilot this concept. So if you ever want to look at a great plant, plan, go look at that one. It's pretty phenomenal. At the same time, there was a movement nationally to incorporate health into comprehensive plan and in June twenty twenty, the American Planning Association released a new toolkit on how to integrate health and equity into comprehensive plans. After the success of Driggs' grant, the BCIFH launched a grant to support the incorporation of the social determinants of health and health outcomes into a city's comprehensive plan in twenty twenty-one. The city of Emmett, Jerome, Cascade and Rexburg were recipients of this grant. While the foundation will not be involved in the hiring of consultants, process or specific outcomes of the completed comprehensive plan, funding should assist through community engagement as well as incorporating health into the overall plan. So that's just a little bit of background. So I'll go through a little bit of a PowerPoint here that we put together, actually that Mike put together for us. So community engagement, some items that we're using to engage the community into our plan because this is the community's plan. It's not ours, staff's, it's the community's. So we're trying to grab the community members the most we can, get input from them. So we're using the websites, which is our city website, the Elevate Emmett website and social media. Barbie Huganen has been very instrumental in helping us with that. She's posted out there on Facebook to get people to fill out the questionnaires and do all the information. We have a very diverse steering committee made up of citizens of the community. We have realtors, we have regular just citizens that are retired from the community. We have business owners, CEOs of Valor Health, Craig Woods with the school district. So we try to incorporate a lot of very key players in the community into our steering committee and it's been successful so far. Some of the outreach programs we did, we had a booth down at the Harvest Festival to get the word out to people. City Hall information, we have a booth out here for people that filled out questionnaires. Utility bill flyers, every month we're putting in something into the utility bills to try to get the information out, to keep people involved, let them know what's going on and take the input from them. And the library, we've had a booth at the library also. We continue, we're hoping to continue with our library booth and our city hall booth to continue updating information and get the new information out to the people. And we secured a, a booth also at the, what is it?
Expo.
The business, the Business Expo. The Chamber of Commerce donated a booth space to us for this, so we will set up there also. And our business-to-business flyers, Dory and Alicia, again, they went hand-delivered to businesses around the community, our flyers to let them know what was going on with the comprehensive plan. So upcoming schedule. Land use workshops. Later here in February and into March, we're going to have one on our in-person land use workshops. They'll be during the daytime and in the evening, two days in February and then we'll do a virtual land use workshop in March. So we're inviting the public to come in there. Basically, we're gonna be playing with Legos. They're gonna take Legos onto the maps that Logan Simpson will provide and put these different colored Legos on this map to depict where they would like to see high-density residential, low-density residential, commercial, industrial, to try to give us an idea of what the community is, vision is for the area. I already said the Jim County Business Expo, we did secure the booth down there. We're sending out questionnaires and the utility billing again, February and March, we have questionnaires going out. And now we lead into the Blue Cross grant, which that's what we're here for, is to accept that grant. So it's a fifty thousand dollar grant towards the update of the comprehensive plan. So we're going to work with Logan Simpson, our team is, and our steering committee and we're going to add health aspects to our plan. So that's the goal. Implementing health and equity into our plan provides a higher degree of accessibility throughout the city, additional job base and growth, access to medical services and offices, increased accessibility to trails, parks and open spaces. So with that being said, are there any questions for me? Courtney is online if you have any questions, more technical questions about this grant.
Mayor?
Yes?
A match or anything at the city or is this just something to help us?
No, there's no strings attached to this grant. There's no match. We have a deadline that we have to use up the, the funds by, which is by one thirty-one, twenty twenty-three, we have to spend the grant. So we won't have any trouble spending it by the end of the summer to help us fund our comprehensive plan.
Courtney, you heard, I presume, what Brian had to say?
Yes.
Do you have any questions or any additional comments for us?
No. We are excited to work with the city of Emmett again and learning a lot about this, the comprehensive plan, how we can best support and meet communities where they need to really have a foundational aspect of health in their comprehensive plans and it helps really that sustainability of health for your community. So I'm excited to work with you all again and if you have any questions, I am here to answer.
Our, our counsel may have, our counsel or, counsel, councilor may have a question.
I E. City Attorney Courtney, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. Hey, the mayor forwarded me the, the grant agreement to, to take a look at and I, I know it's a short turnaround. I, I think I copied you on an email with a comment to one of the provisions. It's something that we like to get in contracts if we can. If it's not something that Blue Cross is, is able to do, I, all I have to do is my job and just advise the council of, of the potential risks. But if it is something you can add to the agreement, that would be great.
Yes, and I forwarded that on to our, the attorney at Blue Cross that works with the foundation on our legal matters. So I have not heard from him yet. I'll get the feedback and hopefully we can work, work with one another on, on that. So I sent that over right when we got your comments.
All right, thank you. So for the council, it, it's a, it's related to the indemnity provision in section eleven. It complies with Idaho law. The, the comment that I, I asked to be added was something we got from ICREM, our insurance provider, that basically states in the contract that we would have the ability to assert an affirmative defense or any other type of affirmative action if, for whatever reason, something goofy happened and we were in a lawsuit. It's, it's very, very low risk, in my opinion legally, but part of my job is to, as city attorneys, to make these comments. So my suggestion would be, assuming Blue Cross is legal, it doesn't have any problem with it, maybe you could conditionally approve the, the contract now pending that approval from Blue Cross as counsel. Or if you think, boy, Jake thinks, but we think this is really low risk, you could probably go ahead and approve it as is. Your call, I'm just the advisor.
Well, just me. The, 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 the grant is a fifty thousand dollar gift essentially is what it is, is what it boils down to. Would you agree, Courtney?
Um...
I mean, it has to be used for, for the conditions that are set forth.
Yes, yes.
But there's no strings attached.
Oh, no, no.
And so it doesn't matter where the money comes from as, as long as we apply it to the health aspect, at least from your point of view, there ought not to be any, any issues.
Correct, correct. And really we left it broad when we say embedding health and the social determinants of health in, into your comprehensive plan. That looks different city by city, so I leave it up to the city on what that means and you run with it.
Right. Well, the, the, the things that were set forth on the PowerPoint are precisely what our, our health focus is in terms of access to medical care. what our, our health focus is in terms of access to medical care. You know, there's an aspect of food security that, that, that we're interested in with regard to the, the food bank, certainly walkability, bikeability. You heard part of it tonight, mitigating the, the speed zone. We typically, at least in, in the area I called Old Town, we have narrow streets. Now, to those who like automobiles, that's a curse. To those of us who like to walk, that's a blessing. And, and so we, we have that advantage. So we really are in tune to advancing health, and we want to make it a part of our comprehensive plan. So, you know, I, I always defer to the attorney, but I like the fact that he said, well, well, thanks, Jake, but we think it's so, so low risk, we'll just go with it as is. And, and I think he's a great guy to say that, because that would be my recommendation. So in any event, unless someone has some additional questions, the, the, the chair will entertain a motion with regard to the Blue Cross of Idaho Foundation for the Health Grant Agreement in the amount of $50,000, Mayor to sign.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Right. This, this has already been budgeted. We had it budgeted to pay for this initially out of our own budget, correct? This is going to actually save the city $50,000?
Correct.
While we had budgeted, correct?
Correct.
Okay, right.
So Mayor, with that, I make a motion that we approve the Blue Cross of Idaho Foundation of Health Grant Agreement in the amount of $50,000, and the mayor to sign.
All right. Main motion has been made by President Nebiker.
Second.
And it's been seconded by Counsel Ruzinkin. Is there any further questions? This being an agreement, I will take a roll. The appropriate response, if you agree, is yea. If you disagree, excuse, yes, yea, nay. President Nebiker?
Yea.
Yea. Counselor Butler?
Yea.
Yea. Counselor Harris?
Yea.
Counselor Henderson?
Yea.
Yea. Counselor Ruzinkin?
Yea.
Yea. And Counselor Sorensen?
Yea.
I've got six yays. That means it passes unanimously. Courtney, thank you.
And tell your legal counsel, don't worry about it.
All right. All right. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. The next issue is the approval of the waiver for curb gutter sidewalks and storm drainage for Wolf Minor Subdivision.
All right. Mayor and council, the acting agent for Wolf Minor Subdivision, Fred Jones, is requesting a waiver to Emmett subdivision ordinance 10-4-2, curb gutter sidewalks and storm drainage facilities for a two-lot subdivision with approximately 270 foot of road frontage. The property is approximately 1.70 miles from the city limits and is located in the northeast quarter of the southeast quarter of Section 4, Township 6, North Range 1, West Voicy Meridian, Jim County, Idaho. The property is a portion of Block 3 of Hill Subdivision on the south side of Waterwell across from Conley Minor Subdivision and Jordan Lane Minor Subdivision, which received waivers for the same improvements in 2020. The property lies within the current Emmett area of city impact. Emmett City Ordinance O 2007-15 allows these improvements to be waived if approved by Emmett City Council prior to the, any application being submitted to Jim County. Staff determined there is no benefit to the city or county to have these improvements installed. There is no engineering or design criteria to follow for these roadway improvements, which in turn would most likely cause the improvements to be removed at a later date. The city of Emmett has waived the same improvements for similar subdivision, subdivisions, which were also in the city's area of impact. City of Emmett's staff is in favor of waiving the requirements for the installation of curb gutter sidewalk, storm drainage, and pavement widening. Jim County has an adopted capital improvement plan associated with the building permits for the roadways in Jim County. The plan will still be in effect per building lot as outlined in the plan. My recommended motion, I make a motion recommending waiving the requirements for the installation of curb gutter sidewalk, storm drainage, and pavement widening for lots 1 to 2 of Wolf Minor Subdivision to Jim County. Are any questions?
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
And Brian, I see you typed my name, Mr. Moore, for Counselor Harris. This is, well, actually, if we approve this, it'll go back to the county commissioners to make the final approval.
Correct. You just make a recommendation, then I type up another letter and I send to the development services staff with your recommendation.
And the county assessor would make the final decision.
Correct. The county makes the final decision on all these. This is more of a courtesy to ask.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion recommending waiving the requirements for the installation of curb sidewalk, storm drainage, and pavement widening for lots 1 to 2 of Wolf Minor Subdivision to Jim County.
All right. Motion was made by Counselor Butler. Counselor Henderson, do you have a second?
I do.
Thank you. It's been seconded to recommend waiving the requirements for the installation of the curb gutter sidewalk, storm drainage, and pavement widening for lots 1 and 2 of the Wolf Minor Subdivision to Jim County. Is there any further discussion or questions with regard to the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay? Any abstentions? Hearing none and none. Motion passes unanimously. The next matter is the approval of the waiver of curb gutter sidewalks and storm drainage for the Sharp Minor Subdivision.
This is going to sound very familiar because it's right across the street. The acting agent for Sharp Minor Subdivision, Stephen Payne, is requesting a waiver to Emmett subdivision ordinance 10-4-2, curb gutter sidewalk and storm drainage facilities for a three-lot subdivision with approximately 660 foot of road frontage. The property is approximately 1.70 miles from city limits and is located in the southeast quarter of the northeast quarter of Section 4, Township 6, North Range 1, West Voicy Meridian, Jim County, Idaho. The property is a parcel on the north side of Waterwell and east of Conley Minor and Jordan Lane Minor, which received waivers for the same improvements in 2020, and a class from the proposed Wolf Minor Subdivision, which has applied for a waiver of the same improvements. The property lies within the current Emmett area of city impact. Emmett City Ordinance O 2007-15 allows these improvements to be waived if approved by the Emmett City Council prior to any application being submitted by Jim County. Staff determined there is no benefit to the city or county to have these improvements installed. There is no engineering or design criteria to follow for these roadway improvements, which in turn would most likely cause the improvements to be removed at a later date. The city of Emmett has waived the same improvements for similar minor subdivisions, which were also in the area of city impact. City of Emmett's staff is in favor of waiving the requirements for the installation of curb gutter sidewalk, storm drainage, and pavement widening. Jim County has an adopted capital improvement plan associated with building permits for the roadways in Jim County. This plan will still be in effect per building lot as outlined in the plan. And I gave you a recommended motion also.
Any questions? Is there a motion?
I make a motion recommending waiving the requirements for the installation of curb gutter sidewalk, storm drainage, and pavement widening for lots 1 to 3 of Sharp Minor Subdivision to Jim County.
All right. Main motion has been made by Counselor Sorensen. It's been seconded by Counselor Butler. Is there any further questions? All those in favor of the motion recommending waiver of the requirements for the installation of curb gutter sidewalk, storm drainage, and pavement widening for lots 1 through 3 of Sharp Minor Subdivision to Jim County, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Any abstentions? Hearing none and none. Motion passes unanimously. All right. I think that's it. Except that, we now go to nine, right?
There you go.
Which is, oh, building. Yeah.
Imagine that. Hi, I'll have my report. Are there any questions on that?
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I see a Skyhawk construction plans review.
Yes.
Are they getting ready to start working?
Yes, they are. We've reviewed the plans one time already, sent our comments back. They resubmitted with those comments addressed, and we're just finalizing that review, myself, Clint, and our city engineer.
Fairly soon they'll start out there, you're thinking, or?
Pretty positive. I see they've got their slip fence up and everything on the south side of the property towards Indian Meadows. They've got that all up. I see new survey markers. So I'm pretty sure once we give them the go-ahead and they stamp the plans approved for construction, they'll be breaking ground.
Very good. Thank you.
On the first phase, not, not the Skyhawk East.
Brian?
Yes.
I don't remember exactly. Is that, is that supposed to connect to Indian Meadows? It's not, is it?
Yes, it is. This subdivision, Skyhawk, connects to Indian Meadows and to Mill Road and Fourth Street.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Anything further? Apparently not. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk.
Hello. Does anyone have any questions for me this evening? None?
Apparently not. Thank you.
I will update you on impact fees. I am doing research on that and have met with the Star City Clerk on their processes and have an appointment to go visit with Caldwell City Clerk in about a week. So with that, then I'll get all the information together, and we'll be coming, coming forward to you. Okay?
Thank you.
Mayor, counsel, you have a copy of my report. Do you have any questions? Thank you.
Library?
Good evening, Mayor and counsel. You have my report, October, November, December. It's kind of exciting to see that we've actually added 50 new patrons in both non-resident and resident for library cards just this first quarter. A good example, I think, of probably the growth that we're going to be seeing over this next year. So, exciting. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Chief Kunka?
Mayor and counsel, you have my report. Do you have any questions?
Mayor?
Yes. Counselor Henderson?
Chief, in your report, you talked about, and you also sent us an email about Officer Woodrow resigning and has retired from law enforcement. Does he still live here in town, or did he move back to Las Vegas?
He's still in Star, and that, that is where he was, and they're still in Star.
Okay. I wasn't sure if maybe he was going to be part of a, yeah, I can't think of what I'm trying to say. Kind of like reenforcement for you.
The reserve program?
Reserves, reserves.
Yes. I did specifically ask him if he was interested in that, and he said that he was not, that he was ready to get out of law enforcement completely.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Let's see it. Mayor, counsel, you have my report. Any questions for me?
Getting off easy, huh?
I like that. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Night.
Mayor and counsel, any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
And there is no engineer, so that includes the open portion.